These days, current events unfold on a dozen channels. Headlines all seem to be shouting. And good news can be as scarce as a moment to relax. So let's turn down the noise this summer. Unplug just a little bit. And head to a shelter from the storms of life. The historic port city of Alpena. Located on the sunrise shore of Michigan. Only a few hours drive, but miles away from the way to the world. Nestled between a vast forest and an endless clear blue bay. Where the wonders of nature are as welcoming as the local hospitality. We can explore more than 200 shipwrecks in the largest freshwater sanctuary anywhere. Count the stairs to the top of a lighthouse. Or the mass that jut into the harbor sky at moonrise. Let's take a trip to the friendly picturesque city of Alpena. A haven from the world. That's pure Michigan. Your trip begins at Michigan.org.
For your viewing pleasure, this broadcast of the municipal council meeting of Alpena is made possible by the funding provided by the city of Alpena. Thank you for your generosity.
Good evening and welcome to the Alpena City Council Meeting of September 8th, 2015. Call the order please.
Johnson?
Here.
Nielsen?
Here.
Noak?
Here.
Sexton?
Here.
Walagora?
Here.
Please rise for the pledge.
My allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Opportunity to read the minutes from special session of August 11th, 2015 and regular session of August 17th, 2015. The only thing I noticed was that Councilwoman Johnson was absent from special meeting. Excused absence from special meeting and had her as present. Any other changes that you'd like to make? Any modifications to the agenda this evening? It says, "Confering before council on agenda and non-agenda items are allowed five minutes each to address your concerns." This is the only time during a council meeting that citizens are allowed to address council. If you do, please come to the podium and state your name and address for our records. Okay, the consent agenda this evening. A is bills to be allowed in the amount of $201,323.89. B is an approval of budget amendment for downtown development authority to record $5,000 grant award and to use $13,121 from fund balance for kiosks, signs, mural, and facade grant. C is the approval of a noise variance from 10:00 PM to 12:00 AM for the Fresh Palates Benefit Concert on 9/12/2015 and Beach Body Appreciation Party on 9/25/2015. D is a local government support of an application by G&amp;L LLC doing business as Petri's Fine Food for a new Class C liquor license.
May we approve the present agenda? Whatever. Consent agenda, sorry.
Nielsen?
Yes.
Noak?
Yes.
Sexton?
Yes.
Walagora?
Hi.
Johnson?
Yes.
We have presentation this evening. Recognition of Jim Stacklowitz, first aid assistance at a Detroit Tigers ballgame when a fan was struck by a ball. His chief is here.
Good evening. You know, as I indicated in the memo, firefighters are never truly off duty. They're always ready to render aid if needed. On August 21st, firefighter paramedic Jim Stacklowitz was enjoying a Detroit Tigers ballgame with his family when a foul ball struck a spectator in the stands nearby. Jim jumped into action providing initial assessment and emergency care until Detroit Medical Center EMS crews arrived. Then worked hand in hand with her care in preparation for transport. The patient suffered a head injury but is expected to recover fully. This kind of dedication, skill, and willingness to help is a common trait among our Alpena firefighter paramedics. And one that Jim certainly demonstrated that Friday evening. He will be commended this evening for his extraordinary efforts. If I could have Jim up front and the mayor. I have here a chief's merit citation for Jim's performance at the ballgame issued by the office of the fire chief in accordance with the mayor.
Sir? Mayor? There you go.
Thank you, Chairman.
Good job. Proud of you.
Just a quick word. It's just from the Saturday that I saw the post. I don't know if it was posted on Facebook or YouTube, so proud of you. And it's just ready to have that recognition and that trait and to show what our department does, what our city means. It really is exactly what our city means and you reacted appropriately. Just something that I'm going to be proud of. Really appreciate it.
I'll be right with you. I wasn't wearing Alpena Party Department t-shirts. Yeah, you're not on national TV. What am I supposed to do? Yeah, I'm not on a channel.
No announcements this evening. I have a couple of mayoral proclamations. The first is 30 Days of Peace. Whereas the first annual 30 Days of Peace began on November 11th, 2007, the 101st anniversary of Mahatma Gandhi's creation of the modern nonviolence movement and concluded on October 10th, the birthday of the late international journalist and musician Daniel Pearl. And whereas the center focus of 30 Days is the International Day of Peace or Peace Day held annually on September 21st. And whereas we in Alpena are celebrating our ninth annual 30 Days of Peace presented by the Alpena Coalition for Peace and supported by LARC. We have collaborated with our local community to lend our unique expression of this event. And whereas for us, it means to increase awareness, educate, and inspire persons in our community to embrace peace as a choice. And we do this through providing dynamic speakers who challenge us to think beyond our own experience. Films which educate and inform. Open panel discussions which help us to see both sides of the issues. The arts and music whose universal language helps us to experience a spirit of unity and religious experiences which open our souls to deeper prayer and a more peaceful way of living. Now therefore, I Matthew J. Walagora, by the virtue of authority vested in me as the mayor of the city of Alpena, do hereby proclaim September 11th to October 10th, 2015, as 30 Days of Peace in Alpena. And encourage the participation of all public, private, and homeschool students to participate in the peace contest and peace concert. And all citizens to be involved in the scheduled activities held during this occasion found at the Alpena County Library and advertised in the Alpena News. I don't think we have a representative. I'll present that to them this Friday at the, here at City Hall at noon, I believe, for the start of that. Okay, the second one is the proclamation designation of Indigenous Peoples' Day. Excuse me. Whereas the city of Alpena and the Saginaw-Chippewa Tribe are primary sponsors of the Lake Huron Discovery Tour that has fostered regional collaborative partnerships for cross-promotional, excuse me, cross-promotion of the arts, culture, history, and humanities of our region. And whereas the city of Alpena wishes to extend its appreciation to the Saginaw-Chippewa Tribe for its contributions and involvement in the Lake Huron Discovery Tour and other events and activities along the lake here on shore. And whereas the city of Alpena wishes to recognize and honor the longstanding history and contributions of the Saginaw-Chippewa Indian Tribe and other indigenous peoples of Michigan to the region of Northeast Michigan and beyond. And whereas the city of Alpena appreciates and embraces the value of multicultural awareness and preservation of indigenous culture in our region and throughout the state. And whereas the city of Alpena desires to develop a strong and productive relationship with all indigenous peoples, including the Saginaw-Chippewa Tribe, based on mutual respect and trust. And whereas the idea of Indigenous Peoples' Day was first proposed in 1977 by a delegation of Native nations to the United Nations. And whereas Indigenous Peoples' Day is an opportunity to educate the public about pre-existing Indian cultures that continue to exist and thrive in present-day America. Now therefore, I Matthew J. Walagora, by the authority vested in me as the mayor of the city of Alpena, do hereby proclaim October 12th, 2015, in Alpena as Indigenous Peoples' Day. Further, the city of Alpena supports that Indigenous Peoples' Day be used to reflect upon the heritage of indigenous people in our region and to celebrate this thriving culture and value that the Saginaw-Chippewa Tribe and other indigenous peoples add to our communities. And further, that the city of Alpena recognizes the value of working collaboratively with all the indigenous peoples of our region, including the Saginaw-Chippewa Tribe, and looks forward to working together on projects of mutual interest in our community. And I believe they have some, who might have some representatives? Christine McCulkey? Okay. No public hearing. We have a report of officers bids on the Woodward Avenue Trailhead.
On August 31st, the city received and opened bids for the Woodward Avenue Trailhead project. This was the second time that we had received and opened bids. We previously opened bids on June 29th, but the cost of the construction of the project was even higher than it is now. And we basically went back, did a redesign on the bathroom facilities that are to be located out there and some other minor modifications and then rebid it. In the current bid opening, the city sent the bid announcement to 29 entities, including the three bidders. And there were three at the first bid opening. And we only received two bids as follows. Meridian Contracting Services, $499,250.18. And Dever Construction, $532,245. City, and this has been, this has been a long project, just to get to this point. We're going on about three years now with commitments for the funding, commitments for the project. And we have MDNR Trust Funds, $245,000. The Alpena County Youth and Recreation Fund, $40,000. Alpena Soccer Association, $1,000. Community Foundation Northeast Michigan, $2,000. Besser Foundation, $10,000. The Alpena Noon Lions, $1,000. Plus, they also gave us $2,000 additional to purchase picnic tables for under the pavilion. Top of Michigan Trails Council, $7,000. And the Northeast Michigan Youth Advisory Council, $1,479. So we've received $307,479 in either grant funds or support for the project. The city of Alpena was to make up the balance of the originally estimated $350,000 project. And that's, that was what we estimated it at three years ago when we submitted the grant application to the MDNR. As I said, when the original bids were received, the city elected to redesign the project. And we set it up so we could, it could be phased while still meeting the Michigan Department of Natural Resources grant agreement requirements. There's certain elements that we have to construct to fulfill our grant agreement with the Michigan Department of Natural Resources. Those, those basic elements are probably bathroom facility, the hard-surfaced area on the walkway, concrete walkway around the bathroom facility. The hard-surface parking area where the handicap parking stalls are. Balance of the parking lot can be gravel, but those areas and the area between those and the, or the bathroom facilities have to be hard-surfaced. And then a hard-surfaced interconnect to the Northeast State Trail and our bike path system. The other elements that could be constructed as follow-up activities to complete the overall project. And those would include paving of the balance of the parking lot. Construction of an overflow gravel parking lot, which would be behind the paved portion, basically for some of the wintertime. Schoolbills, trailers, typically they take a little more maneuvering room, a little more parking room. So we wanted to be able to accommodate additional parking areas in their construction of the pavilion and the other side amenities, including parking lot lighting. And I know, you know, the first thing that people think, $500,000. We heard it, we heard it at Starlight Beach. $500,000 for a bathroom out there. It's a lot more than a bathroom. We have to, you know, A, we have to meet ADA standards with our bathroom facilities. Originally, we had it set up very similar to the bathroom facilities at Starlight Beach. And they're going to look almost, they're going to look identical to those except for the size. By reducing the scope, we basically put in four family bathrooms instead of a men's and women's and two family. Make it a little more user-friendly and still meet our ADA requirements and the MDNR grant agreement requirements. The cost to complete the required elements to comply with the Michigan Department of Grant Agreement would be $346,625.48 based on the low bid received. The balance of the work could be budgeted and constructed utilizing city funding in the 2016-17 fiscal year and would be an additional $152,624.70. The city currently has $348,828 remaining in the current budget for this project. It's my recommendation as city engineer to award the Woodward Avenue Trailhead project to Meridian Contracting Services for the full amount. What we would do, we actually have two options. I'm recommending we award it for the full amount. Basically, give Meridian Contract the go-ahead for the $348,000 worth. And then if we get the budget appropriated for next year, we would go ahead and do that. The other option, if council so desired, and it just, all it does is add a step, would be to award the project for the $348,625.48. And then if the funding is available, we would have to come back to council for a contract amendment to do that. So we really have two options. I was just looking at it from a simplified version. So it's my recommendation, and that award would be conditional upon MDNR approval. We've submitted everything to them. Unfortunately, the person who has to approve it was on vacation and wasn't going to get back until today. And we did not hear anything today on the. And then we would also work to budget the remaining funds to complete the project in 2016-17 fiscal year. Or as an alternative, and again, not, not knowing council's feeling on this, council wanted the entire project built. Now, we would always have the option of taking that money out of fund balance to complete the project.
Go ahead, John.
You know, and this is a hard question to answer, but why, why such a high jump in price from what we thought three years ago?
Actually, the pavilion portion of it ended up being about seven, it was only about $70,000. And that would be part of that second phase. But the bathroom facilities took a real jump and a lot of it has to do with the trades. In our original bid, when we bid at June 29th, we had a completion date. We targeted having it done by November 1st of this year. And we were told very point-blank, it won't get done because you can't hire a mason right now in town unless we went, unless they went out of town to bring masons in. They couldn't get the masons because the masons are all committed. Our bathroom structure is $189,000. That's less than what it was for the Starlight Beach as I remember. It's our other work activities. The paving is up. Concrete costs are up. And here, we're building a parking lot. Down at Starlight Beach, we didn't have to build a parking lot. We tried to accommodate those, looked at our prices from three years ago, and we put this estimate together.
And that's probably the biggest thing is, when we submitted the grant, it was during a time when, you know, we were still in the recession. The contractors are certainly much hungrier. Prices were down. Now, there's much more activity. The contractors are busy. Prices are up. And, you know, timing is everything. And in this case, the timing wasn't good, but it is what it is. As far as staff is concerned, it's still an important project. Where the, these trails, of which there is a series of state trails. And even on this one, there are already several trailheads or, I recall, mid-trailheads that are along the way. I'm not sure if it's.
Onaway.
Onaway has one. Sheboygan has it at the end. And I thought that Mike Millersburg was the other one. So there are several. And we're at the south terminus. So it's a logical starting and ending point. And also, it, the idea was if we have it and with some good signage and that connection on down to where our trail is now, which is basically at the ice arena, is that now we've got a link and we can direct people, bikes, and visitors downtown or to other parts of the city very easily. So we see it as ultimately a very good investment by the city. We feel it is basically economic development. We're already seeing increases in bike tours. There was at least one or two this year. We had some last year. And I think Trailhead will only enhance that. Unfortunately, if we have to do it in phases, so be it. But at least our feeling is, is we should go ahead with this. One, we've got, what is it, 205,000 in grant? Or 245,000 from the DNR. We don't want to risk losing that. Because if we, we start over, it's going to be very questionable whether we'll get the funds. And the project, at least in our opinion, is well worthwhile doing.
We've been told that if we don't, if the project doesn't come to fruition, at least in this year, we would lose that $40,000 from the Youth and Recreation. The other thing, and I didn't point out in my memo, but we do, there is a lot of local support for this project. The local biking coalition is committed to, they want to put in a bike repair facility out there that's basically a freestanding repair where you can hook your bike on it. There's tools that are cabled to it so that you can do repairs on your bike and that. And like I said, the Lions did commit the extra $2,000 for the picnic tables and the pavilion. The one thing, that $348,000, while we wouldn't be building the pavilion, we would be putting the foundations in for it so that we don't have to go in there and dig everything up in the future to, to build the pavilion. The foundations would be in place.
Rich, do we have to commit to the second phase to get the grant or not?
No, we can, the only thing we have to do, and we worked, we worked through this with our DNR rep. We basically cut the parking lot off, the paving of the parking lot off at the far side or the extreme of the handicap parking stalls so that that, that portion will be paved. The pavilion, not a requirement of the MDNR. Basically, they want bathroom facilities, paved part, service park, and the interconnect between the, to the Northeast State Trail. The interconnect to our trail system is to our benefit.
And I think the first, if you call them phases, phase one and phase two. The first phase has pretty much everything I think most people are after with, with the exception of the pavilion. Paving being, well, what I would just deem as a luxury, I guess, for people that are parking there. People are going to park on gravel or they're going to park on concrete, I guess. So probably the biggest. The worst thing about, I guess, phase one, just doing phase one now, is the fact that there won't be a pavilion there or anything for anyone to get out of, of the, whatever weather might be.
There will be the overheads. It's like, similar to the Starlight Beach, that if it was raining and somebody, I mean, they couldn't stand it.
Stand under it, yeah.
But the other thing is, is if we go into next year, you know, we talk about 152,000. But if the pavilion is the primary thing, what would you say? That was about $17,000, $18,000. That may be something that's more manageable to budget. Make sure that gets in. And then the, the other paving and additional lighting and that can all go in later. But the pavilion could easily go in during, then if it was budgeted next year, if the money's there, that could then go in in July or whatever. And by the contractor, just follow it on through. So, you know, it doesn't mean if we phase it that we have to do the whole $152,000 next year. We can look at what's the priorities are in that pavilion. If that's number one, then look at doing that.
I mean, if, if in fact a pavilion is like $17,000, I'm, I would be comfortable with,
$76,270.
Oh, 76?
Oh, 76,000. I thought you said 17. Sorry about that.
Sweet pavilion.
Oh, wow. It's a little bit more than that. That's about half of it. I think we should still wait and see what the budget is.
Yeah. My other question was, does this part of the phase and this funding, if we, assuming we go ahead with this, at least the first phase of it, does that, does that include a camera system of any kind that?
Basically, Steve, and I've talked to Steve about that. Steve budgeted $5,000 under the IT budget for those cameras. The design incorporates conduits for up to all four corners of the pavilion and all four corners of the bathroom. So we will have surveillance out there.
Okay. Because that's almost as important as building a thing in the first place, I suppose.
Any more, there's no sense in building it without those.
Great. I'm fine with that. Definitely more comfortable with, with waiting until we budget in the rest of it for next year.
You have my questions answered.
If anyone would like to move to accept a bid from either of the contractors. And that's all you need, right? Or do you need approval on the project? Not really, or just?
We need authorization and a contract. Karen, did Vicki get you contracts for signature?
I think so, yes.
Those will need to be changed, so.
Do we have a preference if we approve it for just phase one or to approve it for the five and then see what happens?
Oh, yeah.
Because that is kind of what he's putting out there is.
Just approving the bid is for the entire thing. Do we, do we need to specify in that same motion how we, how we?
Well, I think it should be for either one of the two amounts.
I guess at this point, I would say recommend it for the $348,000. And then we will come, that way, we'll come back to you for the authorization for the amendment.
Yeah, but even whatever, we may be able to budget, if anything. A lot of that just depends.
So Meridian will honor the whole contract of $499,250.18?
That's what I've got to verify, but he planned on building it into next spring. That's what I've, I've got to verify, but he planned on building it into next spring anyway, so. But right now, we would just award it for three-forty-eight, and then, depending on where, I mean, by May, we should have a pretty good handle on if it's going to make it into the budget process.
And that's the timeline that he wouldn't even really move on this until spring?
No, he'll start this fall. We have to, because the one grant we will lose if we don't have work underway and utilize it.
Best you're going to give is maybe the foundation and some site work this, this fall.
Will we approve Meridian contracting for phase one of the project totaling three-forty-eight?
Close your eyes.
And we're over.
An unconditional upon the M D R, M D N R approval in the second phase we budget this, this year is out.
So at least be in a sit-in for that. That's what we have remaining.
Second.
Noah?
Yes.
Sexton? Walgora? Johnson?
Yes.
Nielsen?
Yes.
Thank you, Rich. Communications, then, excuse me, communications and petitions, recycling, amendment to the county inter-local recycling agreement. Is that the, and the Northeast Michigan Alpena Recycling Board request for fifty-two hundred dollars for April two thousand fifteen cleanup day? Is that going to be kind of covered at the same time, or?
Who's going to be discussing these? They will be using.
Cindy wrote the letter.
Yeah, so.
Do you want me to read the letter, or has everybody read it?
It's pretty long, you could probably just paraphrase it.
Well, we're here to ask for the amendment to the inter, inter-local government recycling agreement with the county to raise it from ten to twenty dollars a year per household with the opt-out still left in. This year, recycling, we're in a deficit. We're doing everything we can to try to make that up. But with, if we don't raise it to twenty, recycling will go away. And it's popular. We've had an increase of over a hundred percent in the last five years since this has been in effect with the county. Most of the recycling that's done is done in the city, at the two, at Niemann's and at Habitat. And we have the most bin empties there. But we've had a long, hard winter, it was hard on the equipment. But more stuff comes into the recycling center than, you know, we have the manpower or, you know, to take care of it. It's a slow process. We need to do better. And it's not, it's not anyone's fault that we're in a deficit, it's just, you know, the material's coming in, it takes longer, it takes more time and more effort to get those, because everything's done by hand out there. I mean, it's, it's a, it's a long, hard process, so. Most of the entities have already passed this amendment to send on to the county. We're one of the last ones with the change that we had in the appointments to that committee, and they didn't get me the paperwork, so. As soon as they get this, I think everyone else has their paperwork and ready to go to the county. They need it for their budget hearing this month and done, and Stan will be going to that. And that will take effect in January, if, if it's approved here and if the county approves it. Does anyone have questions?
Cindy, if I remember correctly, that twenty dollars is more in line with what other communities do.
By law, we can, we can, without asking the taxpayers to vote on it, we can raise it to twenty-five. By law, you can do that. Any more, you have to take it to a vote. But the law allows that, and twenty is about where most communities are.
Even communities that are handling it the same way we are, or would you, would you say that it would be hard to compare us even if we wanted to?
It would be hard to compare our facility with some of the facilities that do, that have better facilities, that have, you know, they just dump it on a conveyor and, you know, the electric eye sorts it all out. We don't have that, the, it's done by hand, so. It's hard to compare. Our hope is to improve the facility, which it does. They, they work without heat out there, it's not, um, in the wintertime, they have outdoor toilets because the pipes freeze. It's not, it's not the best working conditions. You know, we need to do something about that, too, so.
Is there still some hope to increase what the program offers with the fee, or are you mostly looking at just trying to get right first?
Well, well, right now, is we need to right the ship. If we don't right the ship, then we won't have recycling. I mean, we'll use the money until it runs out next year, and then everyone will dissolve and we'll go our own way. I think recycling is popular enough that we don't want to have that happen. Landfills, the, the state's intention is to close landfills, and they have been doing that. Within the next, according to Diane Rikelsky from Nemco, she was at a meeting, and she said, within the next ten to twenty years, there will be no more landfills in Michigan. It will be recycled. We, we, there's, we will not bury our garbage anymore. It's just as, it's on its way out, so. You know, we're ahead of the game, we have done, and we need to keep moving in that direction.
Most of the, the issues with recycling, recycled materials right now is that the prices for commodities are consistently down. Biggest consumer of any recycled material is China. Currently, with their economy the way that it is and the green peace efforts that they have implemented along with the recycling they've set up on their own in Europe has caused the commodity prices to drop and to project it not to rise through two thousand sixteen, so. Without the, the increase, I don't see how the program myself will continue, and our company works a lot in the recycling area, so. I've got a bit of a background with recycled goods and mechanical recycling, so.
Cindy, just from the processing of this that we'll do, your effective date says December first of two thousand fifteen. The agreement through November thirtieth of two thousand eighteen. So this year, when we run taxes, because we run them as of December first, will it be the ten dollar surcharge this year still?
What, what we're trying to do is get the ten dollar, the twenty dollar surcharge on next year's tax bill.
It's two thousand sixteen?
Two thousand sixteen.
Okay, so this year will be the same?
No, we want to collect it in twenty-six, excuse me, but we need to collect it when you send the bills out this year.
It needs to be on there.
This is the county approval.
Okay, so people that are asking, we're already getting questions for opt-outs. When is the deadline for opting out? Do we have a deadline yet? I just want to be ready.
Yeah.
I didn't make the forms up earlier because we didn't, starting out, we weren't going to have an opt-out. Through the consensus of the rest of the townships, we're leaving that in. So the forms and the clerks obviously have to look October twenty-first to fill out the opt-out form, just like they've done the past.
Okay. So even though the surcharge says January, we're going to, we are going to put it on this year's?
If we don't get this increase to twenty dollars on the tax bills we're collecting.
The winter tax, the winter tax bill.
Right.
For two thousand fifteen.
And to Sean's question about more, are we going to try to take more materials? Absolutely, that's our goal, but in order to be able to take more materials, we need the additional funds to improve the facilities out there. Or we just can't deal with it. Like Cindy said, we went up a hundred percent in five years. The only thing that did go up a hundred percent was the amount of money that we have to take to our business, and, and like Mike said, the prices are down on commodities, so that's not fair enough anymore either. With the twenty dollars, we'll be in good shape to keep moving forward.
Thank you.
I'd say it certainly hasn't been a lack of popularity or participation. It's probably exasperated the funding issue more than anything.
Yeah, I think it's pretty popular just based on bins at Habitat, went from one to, sometimes there's four there. But my questions were, you mentioned the opt-out. Now, that was a decision of the, of the board itself to, of the townships to keep the opt-out?
The other town, township, most of the other townships were in favor of the opt-out.
So it's an all or none?
Correct, so we all have to be the same, or we don't do it.
Okay.
And as a board, the recycling committee, who's charged, the six of us that are charged with this, we agreed to leave the opt-out in for now.
Okay. So that's not a decision to be made from, by each entity? Okay, so the city could not impose a not, okay, that answered my question for that one. My other one was, was the, this is for how, this is for how many years, or is it just not said? It's just from here on out?
We're maintaining an existing agreement, and I think we're in year one of the agreement.
November thirtieth of eighteen.
Eighteen.
More than likely, it'll run two more years.
Okay.
And we'll have to redo the agreement.
But if another plan comes, comes up, then that can, this all could be disposed of with a simple not or a vote, so to speak, okay.
Yeah.
My other last question was, you did mention in your, in your letter about businesses not, businesses don't pay a surcharge, just residents do.
Right, according to the Public Act, businesses are not included in the surcharge.
Oh, it's, that's part of the Public Act, okay, that answers all every question.
And that is why we're doing the business.
I saw, yeah.
Yeah. Because they do utilize it.
Yeah, so they can, so they can offer assistance, but we can't compose assistance.
No, no.
Very good.
Cannot.
That's the only questions I had, I think.
Will we approve the amended inter-local agreement of the county of Alpena from ten dollars to twenty dollars a household for recycling?
Second.
Sexton?
Yes.
Walgora?
Hi.
Johnson?
Yes.
Nielsen?
Yes.
Noah?
Yes.
Thank you, Cindy. And you might be right back up with the Northeast, Northeast Michigan Alpena Recycling Board request for fifty-two hundred dollars for the April two thousand fifteen cleanup day.
This is something that we haven't been asked to pay. None of the governmental entities have been asked to pay in a while because we've been able to do it with the funds that we have collected and the ten dollar surcharge per household. But with the amount of things they have taken in on cleanup day, and the recycling center has to pay to dispose of them. That includes the tires that come in. We did get a grant for tires this year, but it did not cover the amount of tires that we had to pay to get held away. It doesn't cover the refrigerators that come in that you have to get the freon emptied. It doesn't cover any of that, and the recycling center has to haul that away. This program, Cleanup Day, has grown extraordinarily big over the last few years. They have, they're lined up out by the street. Construction material, we have to pay to get rid of. With our deficit this year, and we're looking at a deficit at this point of over eighty thousand dollars. We're, you know, we're cutting, well, we've started the business initiative to try to get businesses to give. We're, you know, looking at every little line item in the budget to cut back and do what we can. But this was a way that the committee thought that we could bring in another twenty thousand dollars if every community paid what they paid in the past. Like, so these, these numbers are based on two thousand and eight for recycling for their communities, and our share of that, and most of the people have already submitted that they're billing too, because, of course, I'm behind on this. But our share for that would be fifty-two hundred dollars. No, it's in last year's budget, was not budgeted for, so here we are. And this is to help us keep our head above water this year.
And it would get accrued back, just so you know, because we'll pay it in the next cycle if you would like to do that.
Well, I know in the past, everybody has contributed. And things were a little bit better, as on, you know, on the board, well, we don't have to charge these communities anymore to do that. And I work out there every year, and we get our butts kicked, it's probably the hardest I work all year long, so. Don't tell my employer that. But, you know, as you, you work out there, and everybody kind of thinks the same thing, that you're just grateful that this stuff isn't going out on the side of the road somewhere, on somebody's property, or in landfill. And people really take advantage. You see big flatbeds pull up with hundreds of tires and twenty refrigerators, and I wonder where all this stuff comes from every year, but. Certainly, they collect a lot of, a lot of stuff. They really do.
What was that original, what were these original numbers based on in two thousand eight? Was it based on, that, did they, like, take people's addresses as they came in at some point?
No, this is based, I think, on tax, tax bill, Greg?
I'm, I'm not sure whether it, an original.
Because it has nothing to do with the number of people that recycle or don't recycle.
No, but it's just, this is just Cleanup Day.
This is just Cleanup Day.
But they don't, when you come in, they don't ask you where you're from or anything like that, just to get an idea of how many people from each township are bringing their stuff, or?
Was it, so it was based on more of the taxable value of each governmental unit?
Yeah.
And then that was what, how they did the percentage. They didn't said what percent of twenty thousand dollars is each of those?
No.
Came up with these numbers.
I guess, yeah.
And I'm sure rounded it off to the nice one-hundred-dollar mark.
I'm sure it was rounded down.
Well, up or down, whatever.
He said other, some of the townships have already approved it.
Yeah, most of the townships have already paid this. At our last meeting, Nemco said most, a lot of them have already submitted their, their, their portion.
And I'm sorry, I missed the conversation. Karen, you said that we could do what with the budget on this, this would come out of the fund balance?
Because it's close to our last fiscal year, it'll get accrued back because it's last year's cost.
Okay.
You know, we have about sixty days, a little bit more than that, to accrue back, so that's what would happen with this.
It would come out of last year's.
It'd come out of fund balance.
Right, so it'd just reduce the fund balance that Karen over in this fiscal year.
Anything else? Make a motion, we pay the fifty-two hundred dollars?
I mean, we approve fifty-two hundred dollars to pay our portion of every white cleanup day.
Second.
Walgora?
Hi.
Johnson?
Yes.
Nielsen?
Yes.
Noah?
Yes.
Sexton?
Yes.
Okay, thank you again. No unfinished business, we have some new business. Resolution number two thousand fifteen dash oh-seven, a resolution of support for Alpena County as the final resting place for the Michigan Department of Natural Resources or M D N R Fisheries Research Vessel Chinook. And we have a couple I could get.
Yeah, I guess I'll just, I'll just read my little memo first, real short, and then I'll turn it over. The M D N R research vessel Chinook will be decommissioned at the end of this year after sixty-eight years of service on the Great Lakes, and having called Alpena home for the last forty-seven of those years. Finances decommissioning, the M D N R is seeking a final resting place for the Chinook, and that means above ground, not below ground, to ensure the preservation of both the vessel and its legacy. An interested group is local citizens is working to have Alpena County designated as that final resting place. As part of that effort, the group is asking the Alpena City Council to adopt the attached resolution supporting this endeavor. The Alpena County Board of Commissioners has previously adopted a similar resolution about a minute ago. Representing the local group is in attendance and will speak briefly, as I believe Jim Johnson will be as well. Turn it over to them.
Very good. Yes, you can come up to the podium, sir.
Very briefly. There's a group of citizens out there, there's some here tonight, that I'm representing. They're not organized, they will be organized. You pass this tonight with the county board, there will be the interest of the two major political entities in the community, and we see that we will be able to organize. As, as the motion states, and as the memo states, forty-six years she was here. She was in port here for twenty years as a control board. And when I sit down, Jim Johnson, who has been aboard her for twenty-five years as a fish biologist, will answer any questions that you may have and a couple remarks that he may have. But the important thing is, she's going to be replaced by a boat called the Tanner. And the Tanner will be in Alpena also. And it's named after the DNR Fisheries Division that Jim worked with, who introduced the Chinook, I hope I'm right, the Chinook into the Great Lakes. And Jim and his compatriots did a lot out there to bring the fishery back. And the Chinook played a major point. When you pass this tonight, I want to thank you in advance for doing it, because there's a lot of interest out there. It's all about the money, and that's where we will have to have an organization to put the money together to maintain her for a period of time underneath some sort of facility, someplace in Alpena, and we'll have to identify that person or that group.
Thank you, Ron.
Hi, and I'm Jim Johnson. I was the station manager across the river at the Alpena DNR Fisheries Station for twenty-five years. So I'm speaking for myself. So I'm speaking for myself tonight. I'm now retired, and I'm also, I also talked with the Fisheries Division lead person, Tammy Patterson, in charge of the retirement of the Chinook this morning. And she said she's looking with interest at what the council decides to do. The council says yes to this idea. It's like a chicken or the egg thing. We're trying to decide, what do you start first? Do you find the funding, or do you find the location, or do you find the message? All these things need to be done, and what Tammy says is, I need to know what, what the location is. And the location, if there's a consensus here, the county said yes, and if the city says yes, this would be a good place. She's willing to stage a meeting here as soon as we can pull the people together to scope out these other questions, which are huge, like, how do we maintain this display? How do we, how do we fund the initial display, and how do we keep it from becoming covered with dull crap? You don't want this Chinook to be an eyesore. You want the Chinook to interpret the history of the recovery of the Great Lakes, the ruin, which happened with the explosion of commercial fishing and lampreys, and the recovery, which came with control of lampreys and commercial fishing, excuse me. And the Chinook, the Chinook documented all these changes and helped us measure the success of sea lamprey control, commercial fishing, fishery management, and the success of all the fish we stock, the millions of fish we stock, was measured by the Chinook. She's too important a display to, to let deteriorate, so the maintenance of the Chinook display is crucial, and it's going to be the big problem. That's where we're going to, that's what the meeting is really going to be about, is how do we fund the long term? We'll also do, the D N R is also willing to help us in any way they can, seek grants for the initial display. That should be the easier part. Displaying the Chinook like the Catherine V is now being, that design will probably be something like what we use for the Chinook, but how do you maintain it over the next fifty years? That's a big question. So we want to have a meeting of the minds in Alpena sometime in the next month, and we'll be inviting anyone who's interested. And, and Greg, I guess I'll call you and see who you recommend from the city, and, and we'll, we'll go from there then. Tammy will come up and we'll try to scope this out in more detail. But really, I'm, I'm here because, actually, you could say the Chinooks and my keels were laid about the same year. The Chinook was, was launched in forty-seven, and I was launched in forty-six, actually. And I retired after sixty-seven years of service, and we hope to retire the Chinook after sixty-seven years of service. I retired to Alpena. I don't plan to go anyplace else. I'm going to be in Alpena County for the rest of my life. We hope the Chinook is here for the rest of her life, so. I hope that the, that the council says yes to this, and then we can take it from there. It doesn't mean it's going to happen, but it's the first step. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you have any questions? I guess I should stay standing for a bit?
Thank you.
Okay.
Pretty much covered it.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jim.
I move we approve twenty fifteen oh-seven.
Second. Johnson?
Yes.
Nielsen?
Yes.
Noah?
Yes.
Sexton?
Yes.
Walagora?
Hi.
Looks like we put the chicken before the egg then, for you, so. He has a contract modification with Wise Heating and Cooling for thirty-nine thousand sixty-four dollars to install and implement a new control system at the public safety building.
And I know that it seems a little weird.
Yes. It does.
Been back a lot on this, but unfortunately, this is the way we've had to phase it, as we go through and see what kind of expenses were occurring before we can know if we can take that next step. The city, and the city's been working, and Mike Kalashowski has been working diligently with the contractor down there, and with our design folks to try to get the biggest bag for our buck. We, I previously mentioned in the presentation to city council that the existing control system for the H V A C at Public Safety Facility is a proprietary system, a train system, which is difficult to monitor and manipulate, and every time we need to have it worked on, we pay seventy-five dollars, or eighty-five dollars, or a hundred and twenty-five dollars an hour for the technician to drive from Saginaw up here and work on it. To address these inefficiencies with that system, we requested to have, that A K T Pairs and their subcontractor Neelis Engineering develop a new control system package for the H V A C system, which was open source or non-proprietary. We looked to the same entity, Control Solutions, who developed the controls for the Alpena County upgrade conducted a few years ago. They elected to utilize the services of Control Solutions to develop the control system. Control Solutions has a web-based access portal, allowing the system to be monitored from off-site and modified by Control Solutions if needed without a site visit. Per the Alpena County Maintenance Director, they are very satisfied, they've saved energy costs with the systems, and being intuitive, they can manipulate it without the need to call Control Solutions for direction. And as Mike has had conversations with the county, they, they've saved a significant amount of money in their monthly energy costs by implementing these control systems over what they had before. We hope to see very similar savings as well. Mike has reviewed the control package proposal and discussed the Alpena County project with our maintenance director. Based on his review and evaluation, we recommend that city council authorize a contract modification with Wise Heating and Cooling, a contract to perform current H V A C improvements at Public Safety Facility, the amount of thirty-nine thousand sixty-four dollars to install and implement a new control system at the facility. Funding is available within the Public Safety Fund, Construction Fund, to facilitate this work with city council's approval. And there are a number of steps that they are going to take, and those are spelled out within the documents that they provided. So it's, it's not just basically having this control system, there's a lot of other work that is involved in it.
Just kind of the last phase of the upgrade, bring it up?
The, the only thing, the only, as far as the H V A C, yes, right now. There is going to be ongoing, because we're not changing out all the, all the variable air volume boxes, et cetera. Those are going to be, got to be piecemeal in the future. The only other thing that we've got coming up, and we're out for bid, working on the bid tags right now, is the roof repairs at Public Safety. So this should get us to a point where the H V A C system, we control, regulate the heat. We don't have one office at forty, or sixty, and the next office at ninety, so we can control that.
Excellent. I don't have any questions. That was my only question, whether this was it.
No, there, Mike, you got it right from Mike.
Anybody got any other questions for, for Mike on that?
I move we approve the contract modification with Wise Heating and Cooling for thirty-nine thousand sixty-four dollars.
Second. Nielsen?
Yes.
Noah?
Yes.
Sexton?
Yes.
Walagora?
Hi.
Johnson?
Yes.
Okay.
Second. Oops. We all yelled.